Syracuse Central School District. The United States of America and two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible with the liberty of justice.
Thank you. Begin by serving up some violence. Oh. Mr. Stewart, an employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Shirley, a junior graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. William Van Lengen, Van Lengen Jr., a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Linda Frank, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Michael Kite, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Jack Peet, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Reed Hicks, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Julian Verfargr, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. President, can I talk about?
Yes, sir.
That's why I have my phone on. I wouldn't have my phone on other than that, but I want to talk about Michael Kite. He passed away at forty-one years old. Too young. Michael Kite had a very difficult childhood. His family moved from school district to school district. I know this because he told his story. And he graduated from CNS. He made it through school even though family life wasn't the easiest. And he graduated in nineteen ninety-eight. Went to a swig, went into communications and so forth, then went to Washington DC for ten years. But he came back and he became part of OCAMBOCE's Career Advisory Committee. And I got to get to know him. I had dinner with him. He sat next to me. He told about his days in North Syracuse and how the teachers at the high school made a difference for him or he wouldn't have made it. He was a phenomenal gentleman. What he did was he took students that don't make it in the regular high school. He took them from Innovation Tech and he came in, hours and hours and hours. He came in and showed them how to do resumes, how to dress for a job program. And he was just phenomenal. But he had a demon inside him. And he just couldn't do it. And I wish I knew about that. And we should pray for all these people during this time of the COVID because COVID had a big difference on him. And he just made a difference. A graduate of our school district who made a difference for young people. Let's say that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. We have a start two presentations or proclamations. I am going to read those and then we'll come forward and present them. First is School Social Worker Appreciation Day, Markers twenty-two. Throughout our school buildings, school social workers have an impact on the district's students and families. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. School social workers of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. They've dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. While our school social workers of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude. Hereby declare March first, two thousand twenty-two as School Social Worker Appreciation Day. We celebrate it with appropriate educational activities. Can I get a second on there? Second, Mr. Marizio, hold favor. It's Harry. We also have Athletic Trainer Appreciation Day, March eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Throughout our school buildings, athletic trainers have an impact on the district's student athletes. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. The athletic trainers of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. They have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure safety of students and athletes. While our athletic trainers of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude. Hereby declare March eighth, two thousand twenty-two as Athletic Trainer Appreciation Day. We celebrate it with appropriate educational activities. Second, please, Mr. Herman, hold favor. Those that is caring. Thank you.
On behalf of the North Syracuse Central School District, we'd like to start out by recognizing the social workers. If I could have Carol Danner come forward from North Syracuse Education Association. We will have the social workers come on forward.
I'd be happy to introduce themselves. Thank you very much to all of the board for recognizing the hard work of our social workers. Obviously, in our more recent times, they've been doing it and doing it for spring and doing all their work to better help us.
I'm Bebra Poliard, and I work at the high school. Hi, I'm Makayla Mills, and I also work at the high school. Hello, Heather Robelarx, who is at High School, Hester.
I'm Jessica Nemwong, and I'm an earth's thrower.
Hi, I'm Makayla Pollard, I'm the Navy Nature Specialist at Rocksmill. Beth Rovind, a social worker at Rocksmill.
On behalf of the district, we'd like to make sure that we obviously copy the proclamation, so we can start in these. And then I'd like to make a quick comment because we are the largest suburb school district in the county. And there wasn't time where the high school did not have a full-time social worker for, at that time, twenty-two hundred students. How far we have come, where I don't, we were split between a high school and Gillette. And we have made great strides. I just wanted to make that comment because that wasn't that long ago. And we definitely know that there's a need. Also, we'd like to honor the athletic trainers that we have in the district. If they can come forward, give them a round of applause. Let them introduce themselves and tell them where they're from. But I was at the OCC Arena yesterday. There are sectionals and we had some students up there at the time. And I know Katie was up there. There is a concern at one time. It was a rough game, but I will let them introduce themselves and where they were.
Brian Buckland, and I'm based at the junior high.
I'm Katie Parker, and I'm based at our high school.
Hey, Dan, we have an initial budget presentation. Mr. Keegan. All yours. You ready?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight, we're gonna, can you hear me okay? Tonight, we're going to take you through our initial budget presentation. Before we jump into the slides, I want to give it a proper introduction. As you folks are probably aware, the initial budget presentation is really a presentation of business as usual. If we do everything we did next year with the contractual increases we have, with the increases we know of across our system, maybe some things that we added during this school year that we intend on keeping next year that maybe weren't budgeted originally. It's that first look at the budget where we talk about some of the items that are going to impact the budget for next year. But it's not the final financial picture. So I just feel it felt the need to give you that intro. And we have a lot to share with you tonight. So without further ado, we're gonna, we're gonna, Superintendent Bowles is going to take us through the considerations impacting this year's budget. And then I'll walk you through the estimated revenues, refresh everybody's memory on the state aid. We'll talk about foundation aid, our tax cap calculation. We'll look at our expenses and we won't forget about our federal stimulus funds that are certainly impacting our operations this year. We'll look at our vehicle bonding proposition for the first time. And then we'll touch base briefly on fund balance and reserves, share some vote and election information, and then conclude with the budget process timeline. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan to talk about the things impacting the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Keegan. So some of the considerations impacting the budget are a lot of the things that we've done in response to the pandemic. We had the social workers here and we put a lot into social emotional needs of students and staff. We have our director, SCL, Lisa Goldberg, and she's done an absolutely outstanding job putting many different things together. Our academic deficits resulting from interrupted remote and hybrid instruction. So we focused on some things that in the summer, some after-school initiatives, and trying to assist in ways to help our students because COVID has not been an easy road for anyone. And we're trying to help students along. We've added resources into several areas in first grade and some extra help just to try to get our students a little bit more from the losses that they had. And the other piece is health and safety of our school environment. There's been a lot of people in the place. You know that we've had to hire SRO and some extra people. We've hired people during the lunch periods at the secondary levels. And so we put a lot of emphasis on some of those things to help keep our students and staff safe. Now, at the same time, we barked up and worked on strategic planning process and trying to make sure we're getting input from all stakeholders and creating academic offerings for our students and emphasizing the importance of professional development for our staff. And what does that look like? As you remember, back in March of twenty twenty, we had to transition very quickly over to the whole learning process. So there was a lot of technology and a lot of things that had to be adapted very quickly. And a lot of our teachers and staff really had to flip the switch and to accommodate the new learning model. Both of the above are critical to the success of the organization. However, the stress and pressure of moving forward while trying to catch up have been very difficult for personnel and all of our function. And I just want to take the time to again acknowledge all the hard work of everybody in the organization. Of our teachers, our teaching assistants, our nurses, our administrators, our secretaries, our bus drivers, our maintenance operation. Everybody has had to do more than they've had to do before. And it really has taken its toll. So other things to consider about social emotional needs. So we've hired additional personnel, our more school counselors, school psychologists, social workers, family engagement specialists, restored and practice specialists. So one of the things that we're finding is the family engagement specialists, trying to make connections with students and families, doing home visits, trying to connect where they have appointments and doing something differently than what they have done in the past. And trying to be restorative in our practices because we don't want, there's a situation going on just to provide a consequence. We want our students to learn from what's going on and then to help restore either the issue, the harm, or what was going on to really make the learning process richer. We've partnered with social services agencies, Liberty Resources. So we have mental health services in our schools, promising specialists. So that was when we had Ryan McMahon offer from the county. So we partnered with county agencies, access services, and contact community services. We've also expanded wellness resources for students, staff, and families. SCL well-being resources come through monthly mental health themes, training and support. Screening of students to better understand their social emotional needs. You've heard people report in their DCT meetings about doing biomass and trying to get information so that we can help our students that are most in crisis. So contributing academic deficits in our budget. One of the things that I know that you've seen is that we've been trying to maintain low class size, the problem of most grade levels, and reduce to allow for lower teacher-student ratios. I know Mr. Grant Treelton has commented during our meetings about this. We've hired additional AIS resources. AIS teachers have been added and redistributed in a manner to make sure that the highest need students are being supported across all buildings. New and improved curriculum resources. Several subject areas are either in the process of pilot or have recently adopted new textbook or online resources to support student learning. We've increased assessments. We've expanded the amount of classroom assessments so that we can measure where students are academically and provide them with appropriate supports. And one of the things that we've added is in the past, summer school was only for seven through twelve. But because of situations with COVID and looking long term, we've targeted students from kindergarten through sixth grade now. So summer school, summer and after-school help, which allows for additional teacher contact and student learning. These activities focus on addressing academic deficits. So under health and safety, what other things have been done? We've increased our nursing staff. The need is going to be on COVID nineteen. And I mentioned an additional SRO at home monitoring at our secondary schools. We upgraded air filters in all building light, and these are Ber thirteen filters. And those are the upgraded filters that were being recommended. We've increased the use of hand washing products, including soap, water hand washing, and paper towel drying. We've increased airflow, number of fresh air exchanges per hour, and more disinfection, including by custodial staff. I think that disinfection is true, remember, or on three six. Time over to turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Dan. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna take you through our revenue assumptions and just kind of bear with me. As for many of you, you've lived through this process where the governor puts out a budget and talks about state aid and then the legislature and the governor kind of go at it. And somehow we end up with more aid in the final adoption of the budget on April first. Well, I want to say that I feel like in the last year, the legislature and the governor have probably worked closer than they have in recent history. And as a result, we're not anticipating in this budget process that the final state aid numbers are going to be significantly greater than the ones we have today. You know, so that's just the reality of the situation. So we're not holding out hope for a major increase in state aid from where we are right now. On the real property tax side, as you know, we live under a tax cap. And although we've had inflation, our allowable levy growth factor is going to be two percent for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And this is going to be significantly lower than what our costs have actually gone up. So that's a, that's an important thing to keep in mind as we, as we think about our revenues. And also, let's not forget that we're also receiving federal stimulus money. And we've got a slide on that in the presentation. But remember that that federal stimulus money doesn't flow through the general fund budget. It's separate and distinct from the general fund. Every year, we kind of look at this pie chart and the purpose of it really is to remind everybody that about ninety-five percent of our revenues come from either the tax levy or state aid. Tax levy being the bigger portion of the pie. We do receive pilot revenues and sales taxes. And we have other revenues that come to the district from a variety of sources, small amounts of interest expense. With interest rates going up or projected to go up, it'll be interesting to see where that goes. We, our treasurer Vince Love and I recently met with our bankers and talked about where interest rates are going and hopeful that maybe we'll be able to invest our funds in ways that will yield better interest rates. But right now, they're relatively nominal, given the amount of money that we have in fund balance. And the nature of our revenues are that we receive our aid. It's kind of lumpy. We receive our taxes. It's kind of lumpy, meaning we receive it in the front end of the year. By the end of the year, we don't have very much money left, but we're able to do some investing and we hope to do a better job in twenty-two, twenty-three than we've been able to do in the past due to higher interest rates. We use fund balance every year, and we'll talk more about that in a moment. And we get some rent primarily from BOCs as they rent our facilities for different programs. And we've worked really hard to increase our Medicaid revenue. And Medicaid revenue, just to clarify, we have students that we provide services to who are Medicaid eligible. And we're able to bill Medicaid for those services. And we've done a nice job working with BOC's billing service to increase those revenues over time. And we're anticipating about five hundred fifty thousand dollars for the revenues next year. Looking at our general state aid, our general state aid is going to go up about five point five two percent, which is awesome. Pilots are going to go up about twenty-one percent, you know, about a hundred thousand dollar increase. And so our total revenues are going to go up about four point four two percent. The, we're going to get an increase in building aid and an increase in the levy if we levy at the tax cap, which is three point five three percent. And I'll come back to that in a moment. Couple of things I want to point out again about the executive budget. One of the things that was really exciting, if you flashback a year ago, we were sitting here very concerned about the state of state aid. The state was having some difficult times. The political environment was very contentious. But our governor and legislature got together and they announced some pretty good news with the finalization of last year's budget, that they were committed to fully funding foundation aid. And this executive budget shows an eight percent increase in foundation aid, and North Syracuse is going to benefit from that. And the way they're doing foundation aid is everybody's getting an increase. And we'll talk more about foundation aid in a moment, but North Syracuse got about an eight percent increase in its foundation aid, which is awesome. And we're also very hopeful with that fourth bullet point that looking at our North Syracuse Early Education Program, there's a lot more to come, more information to come on that. But we're very hopeful that that program will also get some of the increases that it has long awaited. They're talking about a potential eleven percent increase in tuition rates, which directly affect the North Syracuse Early Education Program. This is the state aid run that I shared with you recently. I've made adjustments to two numbers on here. The first one being foundation aid. We became aware that we were going to get about another two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars of foundation aid. So I added that to the number here, giving us about an eight point three percent increase in foundation aid. BOC's aid is up significantly, but that's because we continue to use BOC's services. And that's, that's an area of growth for us. Building aid, we increased as well. And that was because in consultation with our fiscal advisors and, and working with our architects and construction managers, we determined that we could get the final cost reports completed for certain roofing projects and for the Bear Road project by December of twenty-two. And if we do that, we'll get a full year of building aid. And that's why we increased our building aid number from the governor's run because we're going to do some reporting that Albany's not aware of, that we're going to finalize those reports by December, and that'll increase our rate. So overall, our total state aid is going up, like I said, about five point five percent excluding building aid. So five point five percent is the portion that's going to actually affect our operations of our, of our programs. So foundation aid, we've talked about this kind of ad nauseam. We now know that foundation aid will be fully funded by the end of next, the next budget cycle, twenty-three, twenty-four. And I wanted to bring to your attention, each year, we've shown a very large deficit. But at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, with certain components of foundation aid updated, based on information that they're using, there's still other things to update. But we'll only have about a three point seven million dollar foundation aid deficit after this school year. So that's, that's both encouraging and also, you know, once that's fully funded, we will now be tracking with other districts at more modest increases in foundation aid going forward. So that, I've covered a lot there, but the bottom line is that we did receive a nice increase in state aid and that is very helpful in terms of putting this budget together. Moving on to the tax cap. So I've mentioned earlier that that central line in there, allowable levy growth factor, that line is going to grow at two percent. Remember how our tax cap works? It grows at two percent or inflation, whichever is less. And so as we all know, and I've got a chart in here to show about inflation. Inflation was considerably more than two percent, but we're going to have an increase of two percent. But we also get a thing called the tax-based growth factor. That's the second line in this chart. And what that does is that looks at our tax base. It looks at the assessments and the full value of our taxes, of our assessed value within the three towns we support. And, and they're looking at about a one point zero zero nine one or one percent increase almost in that tax base. And that affects our levy as well. We already talked earlier about the increase in pilots. You'll see pilots are going from four seventy-five to five seventy-five. And then the other big factor impacting our tax levy is the fact that the Bear Road project is coming online. We're going to file the final tax, the final cost report. We're going to get the state aid for that and we're going to start to pay the mortgage, so to speak, on Bear Road. And when you add all that up, that gives us a tax levy limit increase of three point five three percent or about eighty-four dollar increase on a hundred thousand dollar home. Moving on to the big, other big component of revenue, albeit not a component of the general fund, one that is really important to keep in mind. We're receiving federal stimulus funds, the CERSA money, coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriation money. And we're receiving ARC funds. And we're using those as targeted as we possibly can to help with academic recovery, to support teachers on special assignment, AIS teachers, special programming, whether it be summer and after-school programming, PPE. And we intend on looking at using it for furniture equipment as well. We haven't really pulled the trigger on that. One might wonder, why would you buy furniture equipment with, with ARC funds? Well, the reason is that we need to Well, the reason is that we need to make sure that our learning environments allow for uh, the proper spacing and distancing and cleaning within our classroom environments, that our furniture is flexible. Um, and it's been a long time since North Syracuse has invested significantly in furniture and equipment. And these uh, funds allow us to do that. Uh, and we're also providing additional resources to the North Syracuse Early Education Program to cover their COVID losses. They uh, programs like these early education programs, like North Syracuse Early Education Program, saw a significant decline in their revenues during uh, COVID. And I want to just emphasize, we welcome any community feedback from all school uh, stakeholders on the use of these funds that have to be spent over the next three years, including the school year we're in right now. Let's shift to our um, expenditure assumptions. Uh, I will, uh, you know, I'm just very proud of how well North Syracuse has managed our healthcare costs. We've been able to provide high-quality health benefits to our employees in a manner that has allowed us to manage costs very effectively. Um, our health oversight committee has considered numerous proposals for a lot of different things that have, again, maintained the quality of benefits, but allowed us to uh, to uh, maintain a reasonable cost structure. On a um, uh, the trend right now though, is that we're looking at anywhere from a seven and a half to ten percent increase in health benefits. When I flip to the next chart, you will notice though, that we're not budgeting a significant increase in healthcare costs because we built up a little bit of excess um, in our budget. Um, not necessarily in the rates we're charging our employees, but in the budget capacity. And so we're going to try to trim some of that capacity in an effort to balance our budget this year. More to come on that, because our, our healthcare advisor looks at our healthcare expenses four times during the budget cycle. And this just reflects his first pass at that. And so more to come on healthcare costs. Again, I say this every year, we're very fortunate to live in New York State where we have incredibly well-managed TRS and ERS retirement systems. Um, we are seeing a slight increase in our TRS. Um, and we're seeing actually a reduction in ERS. Uh, both of these are managed very well and are um, uh, correlate to how the stock market does. Um, and they do it in a way that uh, looks at a, a longer-term window, so that we don't ride the, the ups and downs roller coaster of the markets. Um, but our plans are, these, these uh, plans are fully funded. Um, and um, and it, we're in a lot better shape than a lot of other states around the country with their public service uh, union pension plans. Salaries and wages will increase um, in accordance with our contractual agreements. Um, those have been negotiated and, and they're incorporated herein. Uh, fuel and transportation costs. Um, while we've all been to the pump and seen uh, what's happened with fuel costs. The only thing I will say on this note is that um, because most of our fuel is used for our transportation uh, of students, um, and we get aid based on transportation. Um, we will only feel the effects of this net of the aid impact. And so while we are going to see um, a, a negative impact to our budget, uh, it'll be somewhat uh, mitigated by the fact that uh, we'll get aid to partially offset that. Energy costs, uh, as you know, we participate in uh, in what's called NISMIC. It's a cooperative where we buy our energy and we've locked in our rates through twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, so our budget reflects those new contractual rates. Inflation, again, I've got a chart on that and we'll talk more about that uh, in a moment. The big concern about inflation that we need to be aware of is that unfortunately, the tax cap only allows us to pass through two percent. So a portion of it has to be absorbed in other ways that candidly, we haven't figured out yet uh, in this initial budget. Tuition, uh, we pay tuition to a number of institutions, uh, particularly in the area of special ed. Um, and, and in, uh, and for charter schools, we've seen a significant increase in that over the past two years. Technology spending, the district has, like many districts in central New York, has had to spend significantly on technology, uh, personnel, equipment, supplies and training. We've done that, that's still a factor in our budget, um, and honestly, uh, will always be. AED replacement, as you remember when the law came in, that we had to have um, the defibrillators in place. Um, most districts like North Syracuse bought them all at one time. Well, uh, we need to replace the lion's share of our defibrillators in twenty-two, twenty-three, and that's included in this budget. Um, and we also include in this budget, as I, I mentioned it briefly in the beginning, you know, things happen during the, the year and as things have happened and we've had to make additions that maybe weren't budgeted, the full year impact of those additions are included in the initial budget. So let's take a quick look at this uh, inflation chart. Uh, this is um, uh, from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Um, and uh, so it, it breaks out inflation. If you look at all items, it's about seven and a half percent. Food was about seven percent, energy was twenty-seven percent, and all other items were about six percent. Now, I want, I want to just point out, this is inflation through January of twenty-two. We're sitting here now trying to put a budget together that's going to start on July one of twenty-two and go to June thirtieth of twenty-three. So we not only have to incorporate the impact of inflation to date, but we have to project what inflation might be for the next year. And therein lies the challenge, that's a, that's a um, mind-blowing exercise. And, and by the way, we don't want to be too aggressive, thinking inflation's going to be too high because that could hamper, uh, you know, certain activities that we embark on. We don't want to uh, budget too low because we don't want to under-budget uh, and have, have financial problems as a result of that as well. So that, that's inflation. Um, I show you this chart every year, our initial expenses. Um, and it's really important to recognize, we're in a people-based business. Seventy-seven percent of, of our budget um, is people. It's salaries and benefits, that's the most important thing we do is put an adult in front of a child. That is the teaching, learning process and, and it's appropriate that we would spend our money in that manner. Uh, BOSI's is another huge component, we're very lucky to have a uh, a very vibrant BOSI's and other uh, in our OCM BOSI's, but also other BOSI's across the state that we can contract with uh, for services. A lot of our services are IT-related, special ed-related. Uh, those are two big um, areas, uh, curriculum and other services. Um, and like I said, we've got about twenty point four million dollars, about ten point seven six percent of our budget right now is uh, is for, uh, for BOSI's. We spend a lot of money on supplies and other, um, and we have certain contractual obligations um, that we include in our, in our budget as well. Um, our debt service, that's our mortgage payment, represents about four point six percent uh, of our budget and we will do another special project again next year. Um, we get these, we do these um, special projects where we can collect the building aid on those projects in the year following the completion of the project. We, we've done these each year, most of them have been security-related. Um, we're currently uh, working on one now that is uh, less, less exciting. We're uh, doing some work in the basement of CNS. Um, and we may have a similar project for next year, we're working on the specifics of that. Uh, we spent about eight hundred forty-four thousand dollars or planning to next year on equipment. Um, some of that is uh, due to inflation, you're seeing an increase in our equipment spending uh, due to inflation. Um, but it's uh, you know, we have a lot of equipment in the district and we have to systematically replace equipment uh, as needed. Uh, this is a, a look um, at our, uh, you'll see our salaries and wages go up about three point eight six percent. Um, benefits you're seeing, we're budgeting basically flat. Again, more to come on that. Uh, debt service is up largely due to the addition of uh, the debt associated with roof projects and Bear Road coming online. Uh, BOSI's, we've seen a significant increase in BOSI's, uh, again, mostly aidable services, uh, but also um, just because BOSI's can provide some things that weren't able to do on our own. Um, again, I've got a five point two four percent increase in um, in expenditures uh, for next year. And right now we're looking at, if you didn't do the math yourself, we're looking at a deficit of about one point five million dollars versus our initial revenues in our initial budget. And I just want to mention to people, it's not unusual at this time in the budget process that we have a deficit, uh, because we're throwing a lot of numbers together at one time. Um, and we, uh, we have a lot of uh, analysis yet to do over the next several weeks. Want to explain that deficit though, to make sure everybody's clear on, you know, why, why is it that we have a deficit? Well, again, I'll state for the third time that the tax levy cap only allows an increase of two percent. Uh, our inflation uh, was significantly greater than that. Our state aid excluding building aid was about five and a half percent. Again, inflation was significantly greater than that. And the uh, the, the, you know, the tax levy and state aid represent about ninety-five percent of our revenues. They only grew together by about four point four percent. And again, inflation was greater than that. Just really touching, we're very fortunate, we've uh, we've been able to build our fund balance up over the last several years. Um, and our fund balance is projected to be about four point three five percent at the end of this year. You'll notice two lines in there, we, the voters in December approved the appropriation um, of fund balance for building renovations and for the construction of swimming pool. So we lowered our fund balance as anticipated uh, by about six million dollars and that still leaves us at four point three five percent uh, projected at the end of the year. Reserves, uh, they're down a little bit, again, due to the u- utilization of our debt service reserve. Uh, we are, that debt service amount was appropriated in connection with the referendum in December. Again, to mitigate tax increases that the taxpayers would have otherwise borne as a result of those capital projects that they approved in December. In summary, as, as uh, Superintendent Bowles said, uh, our focus is the recovery from uh, pandemic. Uh, supporting social emotional needs of students and staff, addressing academic deficits, ensuring that our learning environments are healthy and safe. Um, I've taken you through the initial budget with revenues of about a hundred eighty-eight point two million, up about four point four percent. With a tax levy increase at the cap of three point five three percent. Um, with state aid increases of about five point five percent. Um, our expenditures unfortunately are a little higher than that at a hundred eighty-nine point eight million. Uh, with, or increase of about five point two eight percent, leaving us with a one point five million dollar deficit. Again, the big culprit here, I think, is inflation. We're still working on many key items that'll impact the budget. We're meeting with all of our directors over the next few weeks to discuss their budget proposals. Um, and we look forward to coming back to the board in each of the successive meetings here in March to talk about some of those proposals and our recommendations as to how we balance out this budget. Um, our vote uh, will be here before we know it, uh, on May seventeenth. Um, and uh, the usual format, uh, two, two election sites at Sisro Elementary um, and at the district office here. Uh, we have open registration for um, our uh, community uh, up until that date, um, including um, a, a special event on May third. We will hold, hold the registration at both district office and Sisro Elementary. And if anybody has any questions about uh, the uh, the voting process or registration, they can contact our district clerk Jill, um, here at uh, at the numbers indicated on the slide. The, the final piece of the, of the uh, initial budget is the vehicle bonding proposition. We do this every year, uh, with the goal of, of keeping our fleet reasonably current, meaning not have too many buses over ten years old. Um, we're once again looking at ten sixty-five passenger gasoline buses, two forty-two passenger gasoline buses and several M and O vehicles. Um, delivery van, a couple of service vans, some pickup trucks. The total i- is seventeen vehicles at a one point eight million dollars. The tax impact after transportation aid um, is about two point six one, uh, two, two dollars sixty-one cents uh, for a hundred thousand dollar house, again, before star. Uh, on our uh, Salina, uh, for our Salina voters, they will also vote on a library proposition. Uh, the Salina Library has shared with us their budget information for twenty-two, twenty-three. You're looking at a very modest increase of nine thousand dollars or one point nine percent. Uh, it'll have about a two cent increase for the Salina taxpayers only. We look forward, as I said, next Monday, coming back to you and, and sharing more specifics about our budget proposals. We hope on March twenty-first uh, to be uh, giving you a very thorough budget update with a final tax cap. Ask you to approve the bus bond or the tran- the vehicle bonding proposition. Uh, we hope also to talk to you about a energy performance contract and capital project propositions at that time and have you approve the uh, notice of uh, budget hearing and election. This is all heading toward an April fourth approval of the uh, of the budget um, by the board. Uh, hopefully we'll be ready by then. Um, on, on April eighteenth, we'll have our uh, BOSI's election and budget vote. May third, the public hearing and then the budget vote, the actual budget vote for the community um, on May seventeenth. Any, any questions or comments? I know I threw a lot at you there, rapid-fire form, but uh, if you have any questions for me?
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
Presentation, uh, very thorough. And I think I've asked before, with the boss, the purpose is he, um, it takes five years to satisfy that debt.
That's right.
And when it's satisfied, does that money that comes on the tax year go into the new budget?
Yeah, so, so that, that's a great point, that works, all of our debt kind of works that way. So when the voters approve uh, the purchase of buses, for example, we pay for those buses over five years. We get the aid over five years, which is at a pretty generous rate. Um, and um, at the end of five years, they're paid for, the, the debt's done and the taxpayers are done. There's no more tax associated with that proposition, so it's five years and done. Um, and, and that's the same thing and it's a really important point because the tax cap is so confusing. When we borrow, as say to the taxpayers, hey, can we borrow money to do this capital project? The minute that project is paid for, their taxes are reduced by that amount. And perhaps we've added another project at that time, but they don't pay forever for a capital project that's maybe done being paid for in fifteen years.
Thank you, I completely understand that, so that was very helpful. Um, another question I had was, um, you had mentioned that you're going to be meeting with your departments to get their budget. So hopefully you see their.
Yeah, our goal, our goal is to um, meet with them and then to take uh, their proposals and incorporate them into the larger budget proposal that we'll be coming back to you with. So uh, you know, very specifically, um, if we're making headcount additions to support ELA, for example, you'll see those additions as a proposal and it'll be, have been vetted by um, the director in that area and hopefully shared throughout our organization prior to uh, the community seeing it as well. Um, and that'd be across all, all subject areas.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
So, yeah, May third, May third, the budget hearing. Describe it.
Yeah, so that's, that's the public meeting where we present the final budget to the public. Uh, by this time, they've already received the district, the budget district dispatch. Hopefully we get some community attendance, uh, people come out. It's an opportunity for the community to ask a few questions, clarifying questions about the budget in advance of their vote uh, two weeks later.
And that's going to be.
That's here at the district office. Any others?
Just for information, the budget subcommittee is kind of scheduled to be, um, the seventeenth of March and then on the thirty-first.
Thank you.
Premature, thank you. And uh, portion of the meeting for for moving to there, I just want to take a couple of comments of the art being lost. And their desire for transparency in regards to the education, uh, we would recommend to us that, that by the district superintendent, that we review these, since we're having a few sign-ups. I've done it, but I can do a couple. Of our rules, but that is our rules, our rationale behind what we do, what we do here. Um, you know, this is technically a meeting held in the public, not really a public meeting. There's a nuanced difference between those two little phrases there. But it is a best practice recognized by most boards of education, as well as the New York State School Board, is to allow for public comment at a meeting. We certainly want to hear comments from the public. But we do, go in and we do use that practice here in North Syracuse and we'll continue to do that. And we have parameters, which I'm sure you're familiar, you'll see them on the floor. We sign up, we communicate those by our district clerk. Premature speaker. We do no more than thirty minutes till on this topic, so it would be ten speakers and we, uh, it's not allowed by law. I mean, it means a lot, the items involving personnel or legal matters. And board members do not engage in a back and forth or question and answer period. I'm aware that that occasion is inferred due to lack of transparency, and it's this board's desire to respond appropriately when any questions or concerns that are brought forward. To that end, it's our responsibility to find the facts in regards to the situation in order to respond appropriately to questions, concerns that are raised. We also encourage community members always to leave their comments with the district clerk when they're done speaking and writing, and may include board members here. Also, it noted that our individual emails are not published on the district website. I'm aware other schools do that, but there, there is a rationale here. The Ganso other schools do. It's been our policy. And all board of education members will receive a communication to the district clerk. So if a question comes to one board member, it goes to all board members. Because we operate as a board of nine members, not, not any individuals, not nine individuals. And I think it's critical that any communication goes to everybody. So we have better sixty degree communication. Everybody's aware of the issues that are going on because we are operating as a body of nine. But I thought it was important to review a little bit of that, explain why we do things the way we do that, and I will move to the names I have here. The first one I got up is Carrie Storings. Would you like to speak? He's here. I'll take it as a no, and I'll move on to, I have Robert Clary next on the list. I'm going to guess. I have Robin Leacy. I know she's here instead of the missed one. Well.
Hello.
I have Rob, okay, I have a list of four. Is that all we have? I want to make sure I have the correct ones because I have to pull up my board decks. Diane Thielen. I have that, I do have that. Thought they were listed all the way correctly or not. Thank you, Diane.
Good evening. My name is Diane Thielen, and I'm speaking on behalf of families in the school district. I am mentally exhausted from COVID rules and mandates. We are now starting our third year of fourteen days to slow the spread. Enough is enough. It is time to end these masks and vaccine mandates and get our kids' lives back to normal, not a new normal. Masking children is unnecessary due to the characteristics of COVID. Children are at a very low risk from the disease and rarely spread it to adults. As a public school employee myself, I know firsthand that spread in schools is not common. With children, masks are more likely to be contaminated and less likely to be worn or handled correctly. Masking our children can and has caused severe health issues and social and mental harm. After two years, going on three, the cure has become worse than the disease. It is time to begin the healing of all mental damage that has been done to our children from all the COVID mandates, lockdowns, masking, vaccines, and quarantines. This emergency and the powers that government officials bestowed upon themselves should never have lasted this long. It is time to give the power back to the people and let parents decide what's best for their children. My fear is that the next emergency is right around the corner. Once government gets a taste of power through executive orders, it's hard for them to give it up. We must be vigilant and informed as to what they are doing and not give up our freedoms so easily. In light of today's decision that masks will not be, will now be optional as of Wednesday, which I'm extremely happy about. I'm also angry that it took so long. With the abrupt turnaround on mask mandates in the past week, it shows me that it was more political than about following the science. Thank you so much for your time and listening to me. I appreciate it.
I guess Robin Leacy, I'd be correct.
My name is Robin Leacy, and I'm the parent of a sophomore at the high school. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. As you work on this year's budget, I implore you to create a Director of Fine Arts. Right now, the arts are under two different people, which doesn't mean twice the support. It means confusion. The day-to-day is under the Director of Data, Accountability, and School Improvement. Notice, not one mention of the word arts. After-school activities are under the Director of Athletics. It's starting to make sense why no one noticed or ensured that Roxborough Middle School was having a musical this year because who's in charge? So one middle school has a play and the other doesn't. This should not have happened, and it's going to get worse when the auditorium is renovated at the high school without a director in charge. Two people make two different rules, and it's confusing the parents who, who they need to speak to. If there's an issue with athletics, there's a chain of command. The arts are crucial to the mental health of our children. We have the capacity to be a blue ribbon school. We're not going to get there with a Director of Technology. We're going to get there with a Director of Fine Arts. Look at the numbers and see how many students would benefit. How many more could be reached if there was one point person who could make sure things don't slip through the cracks like no musical at Roxborough? Please, we need a Director of Fine Arts. As we move into a new chapter with COVID, COVID, masked optional, I'd like to thank Superintendent Bowles and his staff for their due diligence. I know that patience is not always the popular option, but as a family where both myself and my husband have compromised immune systems, it is appreciated. I have taken great comfort in being able to send our son to school. I know that current guidelines are being followed. I hope that there will be zero tolerance for bullying any student who chooses to continue to wear masks, and any parents who bully students at events be asked to leave. And finally, I'd like to thank the superintendent and Dr. Leahy for initiating a conversation with students at the high school about the dress code. It's refreshing to know that they are starting with the students and asking for their input. Students feel valued when leadership looks to them. I know this is not the first time that Mr. Bowles has reached out to students to ask for their opinion. I would encourage the board to follow in their footsteps and listen to the students they are responsible for. Although I will add that most high school students recognize Mr. Crabtree, who is a continual presence at the high school, but he should not be the only one. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Miss Sarer, have I covered everybody? Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on to Board of Education committee reports, and I will do this scale and see if you have any report on how.
I think that our policy committee is tomorrow. Back to you.
Hey, this is March, it's March, right? March, March. And Mr. Crabtree.
So our legislative meeting will be Wednesday, March second, five to six. I apologize that it's actually Wednesday.
Thank you. And the OC, OC, so OC and O C's each have received last week, throw to Jill. Outlining what happened at the BOC's meeting and plus you got the agenda.
But a couple of things, and those with Don's presentation, each of you received this about a month ago from me. And it says, last year, we saved four hundred and five thousand or four hundred and two dollars by using BOC's services. So that's almost a half a million dollars that this district saved. The other thing that Don mentioned is that on the eighteenth of April, you will be voting on what is called the administrative budget. Both Don and Diane have seen this and or Chris saw it, and it looks good for North Syracuse, and you will be voting on that. I'll make sure you get a copy of that on April eighteenth. And then I am pleased that many of you are joining me tomorrow, eight thirty A M at Thompson Road Campus to start with the CTE program. I think you're going to learn a lot about BOC's tomorrow. I know that Xavier is really excited about it going. That's the end. I report.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Superintendent Bowles.
Thank you. Want to start off, there are letters that were sent out again today in regard to Wednesday, the third, where a mask will be an option if students choose to wear it, but they will not be required. I do want to recognize a lot of the positive things that have been going on. Our robotics team this weekend, under Marty Minor, became a Northern New York State V R C tipping point championship. They really did a nice job at OCC last night, our girls' basketball. It was a, a very difficult game versus our rival Liverpool, but they were victorious, and they have made it to the sectional finals that will meet this coming Saturday at O C State. Looking back, just around the break time, we did have some section three champions in wrestling. And there was Dylan Lorenzi, first place, Jack Sherburne, second place at a hundred fifty pounds, Ken Embry in fourth place, Brad, fourth place, Kenneth Thomas, fourth place, and Drew Baker, fifth place. Not to leave people out, I did see that Jake Griffin, a swimmer of the fifty meter freestyle, human champion, and a new school record was set in a state qualifying time of twenty-one point eight seconds. There's also another student by the name Jacob Griffin, class A, hundred meter freestyle winner. So there's been a lot of things that have been going on over the past few weeks. I also have a note, the girls' bowling, Catherine Arts, section three tournament, led the North Star, North Stars to finish tenth. And second team, all league, was Catherine Arts, Brianna, maybe, and Trinity Short. Also on the board's side, there was Nick Whitworth, highest honor winning, the Mike Bradley Award. So there's been a lot of things that are student involvement, and again, the extracurricular activities, the fine arts are very important to our students as well, and we love it when we see them participating and do well. Thank you, Mr. Crabtree.
Thank you. For the vegetation comments. Yes, Mr. Crabtree.
A few. I don't realize, so it was, there was an article in the paper about enhancement star. And the people in the town of Clay have been lined up for weeks to get this. So let the board members know that senior citizens over the age of sixty-five, if they have like a real low income, are allowed to get a senior citizen enhancement. But people that make under ninety-five thousand dollars, none of you here are over sixty-five, you're not sixty-five. But inflation keeps going, that's going to be me and Letal. They can get enhancement, and I think the town of Clay needs to do more advertisement. I know a friend of mine years ago, Eddie McGeorge, didn't even know anything about this enhancement, and it will save them thousands of dollars on their taxes. Just letting people know that there's enhancement stars, not just the regular star that you're talking about. The second thing is, we mentioned charter schools and so forth. I asked Superintendent Bowles, I want to know exactly how many students are going to these charter schools. We have to pay the full amount for the, I don't know if people realize that, we pay the full amount for these students to go to charter schools, also to parochial and private schools. I'd like to know exactly how many students are attended. I gave each of you a chart a month ago on BOC, so you know how many students are going for specialized consulting. And my last one is, and I meant to bring this up, but my memory goes. You've heard restorative practices quite a bit. I'd like to see the Board of Education get some kind of training. I know it can be done through video, and we probably can do it at home on our own, but I think we need to know a little bit more as a board member about what restorative practices are.
Mr. Crabtree, I think you're a mind reader because there was a meeting that took place this morning with Lisa Goldberg and myself, and that discussion happened not only for training the board, but also all administration, and there's a presentation that is on the dock, it's probably in April, that we met with my secretary to do a presentation for the board.
Thank you.
About that.
Other comments?
I do.
Yes.
We're per, so that the public does know, we're currently working on the first meeting, actually, conclusions on the seventh meeting. And the students and kids that can't see, and the things that they're struggling with, and the social workers of schools are exchanging information so that the kids who are feeling the custom that we about maybe some things that are going on, that those are items that we look at and talk about, and we are moving forward. I think we are moving forward in D E I and trying to do five of the things that we can do for this.
Thank you. Others? I, I just want to comment, if you saw on the Friday letter that Senator Maggie was here, and so I want to thank Mr. Crabtree for inviting Mr. Maggie to meet Mr. Bowles. He did, and invited me, thank you. And just to share with everybody that I think we're in a good place with the current fifty of Senate, if there can be fifty seconds, is what I'm hearing. John was a teacher for many, many years, gives, gets our issues, he's lived our issues, so I think that that's good for us. He'll definitely be there and get for it, so thank you. Other comments? I will move on to, we can actually, I don't know, for a motion in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting, if there are any examples, this is for, second, this is, now. Any comments? Being not all in favor? That's carried. I get a motion to place B, C, and D together, motion. I think there's second, Dr. Kramer. B, C, and D are the classification of students for school or preschool in their home, A and C. B, C, and D, four, so we need discussion. Yes. Oh, no, oh, sorry. All in favor? Oh, that's, that's, those three are carried. An acknowledgement of business officer reports, A and E, motion please, motion Mr. Thor and second, Mr. Kruger. Any discussion there? Being not all in favor? That's carried. Discussion action items, either A or unless you create one point of F to E, abolish one point of E storekeeper, creating supervisor of stocks, eliminating storekeeper, and there's a reference in Friday letter. Last two Friday letters that we, that we issued, so we could have motion for that, which was Mr. Kruger. Second, Mr. Louis Luther. Any discussion? Being not all in favor? Those, that is carried. B, acknowledgement of gift. Motion please, place before, motion, this, and second, Mr. Merizio. Any discussion? Being not all in favor? Close that is carried. Declaration of not marketable surplus, item C, motion please. Motion, Mr. Thor, second, Dr. Kramer. Any discussion there? Being not all in favor? Close, that is carried. All right, B, we're going to acknowledge, time limit will be acting up, and report C. We have John Cole, principal on special assignment, time is twenty-five point seven years service, twenty-three, three, one, twenty-three. I get a motion for instructional personnel report, A, motion, Mr. Merizio, second, Mr. Herman. A and B forest, any discussions? Being not all in favor? Close, A personnel report accepted, B, report stamp personnel report, motion. For, second, Mr. Merizio. Any discussion? Being not all in favor? That is carried. Administrative personnel report, C, motion, Mr. Crabtree, second, Mr. Scannell. Discuss. Being not all in favor? Close, that is carried. I'm going to make motion to move into session. Motion to move into session, the purpose of the, reviewing the entire record of three individuals. Receive an update on negotiation for the person who substitute garden unit, and there would be one legal matter with no action, but like in the seventh, second, Mr. Merizio. Any discussion or comments? Being not all in favor? Close, that is carried, and a motion for your plea, which was Mr. Louis Luther, second, Mr. Herman, any discussion for you? Favor, close. Seven, thank you very much.
Are you sure?
Yes.